Chip Shinkah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Here we are, ready to proceed, but I'm going to, after the roll call, do a little statement. I love you, Jen.
Ice cream seventies in the hallway or something?
Yeah.
Is that the same?
No, I just wanted to give, uh, we have Michael here, he hasn't actually introduced himself yet to the group. So I want to create a little slot for that to happen and then we'll get into the charter. Is there something wrong with our internet?
Probably. That's a DAS IT question. If we want to go in the hall?
No, it's good. Larry. Okay, so, uh, want to call the meeting to order?
Do you want me to do that?
Yes.
Oh.
You can't hear me, can you?
Sorry.
Okay.
There's a big echo going on and you're, it depends on who's speaking on whether we can hear them or not.
Mike. Oh. Okay.
Sure. So, assuming you can hear me, I'm going to call this meeting of the Capital Planning Commission to order, and we can do a roll call.
Mike Abate is absent. Jim Bauer.
Present.
Ben Briggs.
Here.
Chris Hoy.
Here.
Jan Colaway.
Here.
Jeremy Miller.
Here.
Michael Slater.
Here.
Okay. Sit. And we have.
All right. Thank you. Michael would, welcome. Would you like to do a little introduction?
Uh, sure. So I'm Michael Slater. I'm president of the Salem Planning Commission. And I. Pardon? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and speak. I'm at the tail end of a cold, so please forgive me if I'm hard to understand. And today was my last day of the first year of my two-year graduate program at the University of Oregon, where I am studying community and regional planning. So I am both excited, relieved, and a little bit fatigued, but delighted that my schedule has now changed and I'm able to join you.
We're glad you're here. Welcome. And Daniel, did you have something you wanted to say?
That, that was, I just want to have, uh, Michael officially introduce himself. And I will say, I graduated from that program, Michael, so we're kin.
One day I aspire to your position.
Oh, really?
There you go.
Your work. So the next thing is, so last, uh, meeting, we uh, were set to review and approve our updated CPG charter, which was, I think for Michael's, information was something that we were working on after we had updated, uh, recently our administrative rules. So there was some mismatch and we were trying to, uh, make those coordinate appropriately. And, uh, following that discussion, there was some conversation about language, usage, grammar, spelling, all the stuff that, you know, I enjoy being. So I, I, I went back and my, my idea was, um, we're trying to make this accord to a standard and DAS actually has a communication standard and a person that oversees that, our communication director, Ray Lynn, so I gave it to her.
Ray Lynn Henson?
Yes.
Michael, tell her I said hello.
So I had her edit it and, uh, uh, I figure it's, it's officially sanctioned in terms of the usage that DAS has in their style guide. I'm not like going APA, AP, whatever. So the version I sent you is the version that Raylene, Raylen put her stamping approval on. So is there any further discussion? I made no content changes, only changes to the grammar usage, capitalization, that kind of stuff.
I had one comment.
Yes.
But it doesn't require you to do anything because it's not a deal breaker. Under the action section, there's, we have a choice of approving it or approving it with comment, blah, blah, blah. And one of the choices is disapproval, but with no comments. And I'm just curious, if we disapprove something, does that beg the question of why we, why we disapproved it? I mean, would the, the bodies that be want to know why? And if those are registered somewhere else, or the agency can get those in some other manner, then I think you let sleeping dogs lie with that document. But if I was a state agency, I would have wanted to know why.
Well, the decision is disapproval. I think there's a how that gets, um, enacted in some way. And I think there's always a, an exchange. So it would be, I, I'm the staff, I would tender a staff report, which would state to the agency that their proposal is not approved by the Planning Commission. Here are, now, we can deliberate within the meetings about what would allow the agency to receive approval or just the nature of the disapproval. So, um, I mean, that's just part of the procedures. I don't know, would we want to put that in the charter? Because it's really kind of.
As long as it's, it's available.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna.
No, she's got them all settled.
Okay.
They could.
Add it.
Table changes.
So the motion would be, um, to adopt this, to ratify the, the charter as.
Version two?
Yeah, version two.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Jane to ratify the charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jan, second.
Question by Jane, second by Jan. Any further discussion?
Hi, Jan. Why are you looking at me? Um, I, I like it. I would left the page numbers on there and a date somewhere. So if archaeologists find this, they know what year it is.
Okay.
Version, whether it's a new one, an old one, it gets posted somewhere, we know it's from like current sources.
Yeah. So when I, when this gets approved, I will put a date ratified.
Perfect.
I'll add the, the, but I intended to put the ratification date just so that's in the Twitter or whatever. No, that's when it was approved. And I'll put page numbers on it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I can't see all the hands in the room. I can only see Jan, actually, right now. Cool. All those in favor, say hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed? Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Good job, Daniel.
Yeah.
Crossed it off the list.
Yeah.
Um. That's all I had for that. So now we are moving into, um, so we are in a period where, uh, the Capital Projects Advisory Board is doing their process of going to be reviewing agency quality plans, uh, which will go on through up to August. But it's incumbent upon the agencies who are proposing capital projects within the city of Salem to have them initially reviewed by the commission. This is the agreement that we have with the board. So, uh, the first group of agencies, um, which is eight of them in this next, the July or June round, the only agency that had any capital requests in the city of Salem was Department of Education at the, the School for the Deaf, uh, which we've, are familiar with because we've had numerous projects. So they are going to present their proposal and in the context of this, a lot of planning work that they've done. And I think it dovetails into a conversation about, uh, future area planning and, and bringing that up to, to date. And I think this is a good opportunity to kind of use this as a, as a, an opportunity to think about that process. So I'm giving it over to Melissa, who will take over.
Do we want to include for the record our two guests that showed up?
Yeah, if you don't mind, um, if somebody can just like, uh, state their, their names just so it's recorded. Yeah, that will help us out.
So my name is Melissa Garner. I'm the Business Services Director at the Department of Education. And I will turn the camera toward Bo Edmondson, who is the curriculum director for the School for the Deaf.
Whoa. Hi. I'm Bo Edmondson. Actually, just sent a very happy, um, thank you all for coming here today. Thank you. I'm Director of Instruction, just to let you know.
We are super excited to be here. I don't know, I'm talking to this camera and hello to all of you in the room as well, but on the record, right? And there's been a lot going on at OSD over the last, well, since we've been here last. Partly because of this group and partly because it's the right thing to do. We've been working on a updated facility condition assessment and a long-range facility plan. We've gotten lots of comments from here and from CPAD both, that really, we should probably have a plan before we start investing money in the campus. And we have, we've done that, or we're almost done. And one of the major conclusions out of that, it is, it's really our turn to make a major investment in the School for the Deaf. And you'll hear more about that as we go on. The School for the Deaf has a mission statement that's for you here. And this was actually originally developed in ASL and then translated into English. So OSD is a deaf-focused school. They do English instruction as well, but their primary mode of instruction is ASL. OSD is more than just the nightmare factory, for those of you who have been in Salem.
Proud of that.
And they have a fantastic campus and horrible buildings. So this is why we are here. The School for the Deaf is the second oldest school for the deaf, cut west of the Continental Divide. And we've been in that same campus area for 110 years. So we have head cert and a couple of charter schools that co-locate with us. They're leasing the space from us. And with that, that is a total of about 300 students. The School for the Deaf has about 100 students enrolled at this time. Fifty-four percent of them are on campus full-time, well, throughout the instruction week because they're so far from the campus that they can't, um, get back and forth, so they stay. So when I mentioned that it was our turn, this is the big reason. So the initial investment in the campus was in 1910. And they built the buildings that were there. There was actually a rail line that came into campus off the rail line that's go, orders the campus right now. And it delivered wood to the central plant to feed the boiler. Things have changed since then. The rail line is not there anymore. And they did a major output of growth in the 60s, and that's because of the Rubella outbreak. So the Rubella outbreak increased the number of deaf people in the population, and we needed more space at OSD to accommodate them. So all the dorms got built at that time. The high school was built at that time. So that was the last major investment. The work that you guys have authorized in the past has helped us maintain the campus to some degree. But really, what happened with the long-range facility plan is we really understood how bad our buildings are and how much we need to update them. So it really is our turn.
Do you have Ben's old licenses or fruit?
So what we did is we took a survey with all of our students that we looked at the things, at the values that they had and what they valued on campus as well. We pulled all those together and we wound up with four valued areas. The first one is, um, they really want more deaf friends. So they want to increase the growth of deaf students. They want more opportunities for career work, getting ready for the real world. The third category is, they really wanted to be able to be proud of the campus and invite other individuals to, um, you know, have people find it a beautiful place and invite people to come. And they wanted to have, um, all ability people have access to camp.
How we go?
So we've done a facility condition assessment. That was included in the materials that we submitted, but I've got my copy here, if you want to take a look at it. And one of the major outputs of that is, so it's printed on 11 by 17 because it's something I refer to on a regular basis. Pass that. We worked with an architecture firm out of Portland, and they've done an absolutely outstanding job working with our students. We have current conditions that are a little bit less than ideal. We have well-cared-for facilities. They've done a great job of keeping them up to date, and they are so outdated. It is hard to do that. They're getting worn out. One of the notable things is that the sidewalks are all very narrow. And you can see this visual conversation happening right now. It's really hard to have a conversation on campus and stay on a sidewalk. So you think about systemically, this, this campus is not built for deaf people. And when we got started, there was still a focus, focus on English instruction. And so that was less important, and they didn't know about accessibility, what we know about accessibility now. You'll see it come up because it's really appalling, but in the top-left corner of that slide, you'll see it, the generator that the campus uses. Excellent condition. We have a facilities condition assessment or an index from the long-range facility plan, and that's represented here. There are some notable buildings in green, but green only gets us halfway to amazing. And these are light green, so they're not even halfway to amazing. Those buildings are the elementary school building, elementary and middle school building, which is building number 13. Number 11 is the gym, and that's in pretty good shape, partly because of the investments that you've authorized. The locker rooms are fantastic there. And 17 is what is known now as the Panther Den. It was that new dorm that was built by Extreme Makeover back in the day. So that's also in good shape. But there's some notable red buildings on here as well. There are two condemned buildings on here. That is nine and four, one slash 14, one's a carport, so it's detached, so it has a different number. The old gym is on the list, the old administration building that was originally the women's dorm. It's one of the oldest buildings on campus. There are some problems with nearly every building. So if you look at it a few different ways, there are different ways to look at how suitable something is. And we've got three represented here. The physical conditions, the suitability, like how well does it do its job? And what the student experience is, that's one of the most fascinating things we learned during this process, is where do the students value? And the gym and the main building that has the library are certainly on that list. But if you look at overall rankings, we take all of those things into assess, into account, what's actually suitable. And you'll notice on here, the gym's still in great shape. The other two buildings are the Panther Den, which is only used for like after, after-school and social gatherings, which is important, don't get me wrong, and the central plant.
And nothing's in dark green.
And nothing's in dark green. Correct. The high school is one of the reddest buildings on campus. That's the sort of T-shaped building. And that is full of asbestos in every single surface, floors, walls, and ceilings. So doing anything to that building is just impossible because the abatement would be so expensive that we wouldn't be able to do it. And we're, we are replacing windows at the high school this year, and there's asbestos in the mastiff. So. None of this, though, if we just fix these buildings, we would not be addressing accessibility, certainly not the energy requirements that are coming. None of the hazards that we have on campus. And it, all the interior spaces are going to continue to degrade because at this point, there is no way to refresh them to the point that they will be affected. So our strategies really are to remediate the problems that we have to fix, bring the learning and living environments into the current age because they were, again, built in the 60s, and improve actually the space for deaf instruction. So where we can adequately educate deaf students. And that has everything to do with how corners are constructed in buildings. It's as broad as that.
To ask a question?
Yes.
So on this, the strategy number one, with hazards, are there any identified hazards to be remediated in buildings that are going to ultimately be demolished in?
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, so what we, we are minimizing the, the remediation in the buildings that will be demolished. We are only addressing the things that actually have to happen. Like we can't address, there is no elevator to get to the laundry. We're not going to put an elevator in because that's one of the buildings that will eventually get torn down.
Well, there's been.
Yes, yeah. So.
So what we'd like to do is make an impact on the change to areas that we mentioned and give some new spaces within the facility for, you know, the elementary school as well as the high school through adult transition program. So, um, in the middle school as well. So I'm thinking about, you know, um, the parents who are hearing, who, you know, have babies, then they find out that they're deaf and they're not sure exactly what to do, where to go, what are the resources, information? We'd like to be able to set up a center that would be like a hub where they could come and find out about resources, and we could teach them and, you know, have sign language classes for the parents. And then we also have, um, you know, a preschool program that is actually going to be starting this fall. And we would love to see that increase in growth and, you know, just have a great space for the children as well as we grow and they can grow within their space. We will continue to do, obviously, maintenance and learn and try to, you know, improve the space that we have in the dorms as well. Those areas really need, um, need help. And as far as the upper school program, we really like to, you know, have a performing arts center. We don't have anything like that. We also have a museum on campus that is amazing, and we'd like to have that maybe perhaps share with an auditorium or a performance hall. So we'd like to have something like that and connect those two. And then also, um, you know, like community, um, like a health center that we can collaborate with, you know, our community with the understanding that, you know, deaf children have needs and they become adults and, you know, they're going to represent our community. So we would really like to have, you know, be able to connect that community around the school with us. Um, and I think if we had the appropriate buildings, we would be able to collaborate and work together with our community. Also, I should say, final, you know, um, we're focusing, really want to focus on, um, you know, CTEs for students, find a pathway for, for work and employment. You know, whether it's welding or contracting or carpentry or whatever that is, to be able to have a place where they can learn later and get direct instructions.
So the campus is actually upper and lower. It seemed wise to take advantage of that and move the lower school to the lower part of campus and the upper school to the upper part of campus. One of the notable things about this is, if you take a look, there is just a thousand ways that I could tell you about what's wrong with the campus. This is one of them. So the solid lines on this first map are the driving surfaces on campus, and the dotted lines are the walking surfaces on campus, and there are 46 points of intersection. If you are focused on a conversation that is happening visually and you can't hear, how are you supposed to know that a car's coming? So, um, it's a little alarming. So addressing that, we will be moving to, uh, driving spaces on the outside edges of the campus and changing the center of the campus to be walkable only with obviously emergency access of the middle of campus, so we could get deliveries and things. So how are we going to make this happen? And this is where your piece of it comes in, because this is where we start asking for money. Because this is not going to be cheap. You asked us to provide you with costs. So this is actually cost that the architect worked to get. So this is based in actual money for 27. So that's where those estimates are based on. It starts with the residence halls. Because in order to move the campus the way that we would like to get it to, we have to move those residences first because they are on the side where the upper school will go. So we build the new residences, and then in the second one, we take on, um, the rest. We do upper school next, you'll see that. There's also some critical, there's a lot of money in here for critical fixes. And I will tell you that the plumbing that comes into the campus is original. So it's been there since 1910, and it has a few issues with it. We've been grandfathered in for code reasons, but that's not something that we want to, you know, continue to celebrate. Um, there is asbestos in lots of spaces on campus. It is not just in the high school. It's all over. So those critical needs, um, just as an example, I grabbed some of the pictures that we have. We have lots. Again, the generator focus is celebrated because it's just such a mess. It's missing a few magnetic coils, I'm told. So it still generates power, but it isn't super clean. Um, that first picture in the upper left is the path between parking and the track, and that's the only way to access the track that has a path. The next question, the next picture is a corner of one of the buildings that will stay on campus. It's the central hub for meals and for nursing and facilities. And that, uh, corner is falling into the ground a little bit every year. There's walking paths all over campus that aren't actually paved or accessible. The next picture is a fence bordering the campus that they have propped up, but need to get actually fixed. So there's a lot of small, you would think, small credit, but adding those all together gets us to a fairly significant number. There is really no way to describe to you how bad the dorms are right now, but this gives you a few pictures to look at. I would invite all of you to come out and tour OSD's campus. I would be happy to get that done for you. It takes about two hours to get through the whole campus because it's 37 acres, and there's a lot of buildings on that campus. Happy to show you around. It's pretty, pretty alarming. Yeah, I, one thing to note, there's a picture in the boys' bathroom. They used to have two rooms, share one bathroom. And when that became a thing you just don't do anymore, they put up walls, but not entirely to the ceiling so that they could not have to go after permits because that was expensive. So they did all that work by themselves. They've done everything they can to make this campus work for a long time and have done a reasonable job. And it's a fantastic place to get an education. But could you imagine being a parent, walking into these, one of these spaces and saying, "I'm going to leave my kid here for five days a week"? The staff is fantastic. The space is less so. So then in phase two, and again, we would come back again and talk to you about specifics about this and specifics money. But phase two would be an upper school, and this is a completely new school that would take out three buildings on campus and replace it with one. This would include a performing arts center and a, uh, the space for the nightmare factory, lest you think that we are forgetting about it. It's actually a really important part of the CTE work at the school because the students have gone down to Disney to learn about how they do line management at Disney. It's, it's actually a really incredible program. Then the lower school renovations, so we don't need to destroy that building, we just need to fix it up. There are no doors for classrooms in the entire building because it was built in the 70s. When open concept was a really big deal. And so we'd like to have doors. We have students that run like everyone does right now. It's so, we'd like to have places where we can at least shut the door and keep them there. Also to increase the noise pollution. So even though our students are deaf or mostly deaf, they may be hard of hearing, that noise is distracting while you're trying to learn. Then the last one is a community wellness center and athletics. This is a new gym with all the things that a gym has. Right now, the weight room is in a different building in the basement, and it's not accessible. So addressing all of those things, putting in a new gym with all the different pieces to it. Again, every school in every community is the hub for that community. Every school becomes someplace where the community hangs out. That is the same for the deaf community. So this is part of their community. And let me tell you, the ga, the games, Washington School for the Deaf plays, Oregon School for the Deaf, are very well-attended and a very loud, raucous place to be. It's a great game to come to. So to wrap this all up, we really need to address the access and functional needs of that campus, address some of the operational concerns. We really want to prepare these students to meet the challenges of the world in safe, lovely learning environment that's up to our current standards. And just to remind you, these are all students that either have an IEP or a 504. These are all students that are exception. Some of them have different and varying other needs that come along with that. And in many cases, we are getting these students in middle school where their home schools have already failed them, and this is now their second opportunity. They find a place to belong, to be loved and well-cared-for when they come to OSD. We want to make it as good as possible for them. to be loved and well cared for when they come to OSD. We want to make it as good as possible for them. But closes our, our presentation, but I would invite you to follow OSD on social media. Right now, they're talking about their graduates and their senior athletes. Students are making those posts, so it's a great way to learn about what they're doing.
Great presentation, great overview.
I assume you have questions for us?
Any questions?
I didn't see, and it's not a critique of the presentation, I didn't see a number of present capacity, future capacity with your aspirant model for future growth. What is the number that you're going to start at and what do you hope to be building capacity for with these renovations and this work?
You're talking number of students? Yeah. So currently we have a hundred students, roughly a hundred students on campus and ideally we would have no more than three hundred.
And why is that ideal?
Did you say two hundred?
Three hundred.
Yeah. It is. Do you have an answer? Do you want to answer?
I do. Well, currently with our preschool program starting, we're hoping to contact more and more families and have them start. And we're looking at, you know, age three, contacting those groups as well, other preschools. And then parents and families will find out more about the, you know, the deaf school, OSD, and then they'll want to place their students there. So we're trying to start early and start young. But I think, if I'm understanding correctly, your question was, why would you max out at three hundred?
Not, not how you get there, but why three hundred?
You become three hundred, but why think you want to max three hundred? You don't want above three. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. I'm sorry. Well, we have, you know, estimate, I think about two hundred students that are deaf and hard of hearing in the state. And so if you look at all of those, and a lot of those don't use American Sign Language. So we're looking at our goal about three hundred. So we're looking at, you know, people that would actually benefit from direct instruction in sign language. So if you look at the total in the state, how many in the state? Excuse me, one thousand three hundred in the state.
I think that would strengthen your presentation to be able to present that or even to explain that. The first thing that jumped into my mind was, is there a concurrent staffing expectation or program that you need to advocate for in order to meet the needs that all of these facilities are going to create?
Right now, we have the staff that we would need to start the residence halls because we don't expect that we would get a lot more students right off. So as more students come to us, we would upstaff both residence hall staff and instructional staff and then of course, facility staff. So all the infrastructure things that come along with that.
And is there a system where when you improve and increase your facilities that the state also considers that it triggers an increase in staffing?
Yes, that would go through the general policy option package.
And do they go concurrently?
We haven't, we haven't been approved for the facilities yet, so we haven't addressed the staffing yet.
And similar to when you came before us for the track.
Yes.
And my comment then was although this school is under the purview of the state, any school district in our state would never tolerate the conditions that this school is in. I mean, if we really are talking, walking the talk of equity and inclusion, we've totally missed it so far. So there's room for improvement.
Yes. So we have two hands up.
I would agree with you. I was saying.
Chris is first.
Thank you. I was wondering if, are there any, are any of your buildings categorized as historic? And have you talked to the folks at Shippo at all? Are there any implications with historic preservation, that sort of thing? And so I'm curious if you've done any outreach and also if you've talked to the city and our historic preservation person, Kimberly Fitzgerald, for all of the other, like, as you're getting ready to, it sounds like you're going to be digging in new, new spaces where there aren't currently buildings. And I think you'll, especially out in that area, you're going to want to talk to our person about implications with all of that.
Yeah. There's one building on campus that's historical and it's condemned. So we have some work in front of us with that, Chris. We're fully aware of that. And of course, there's lots more to talk about in practical terms about exactly how do we do this? One of the things that you would be interested in is there's an unused entrance on Cherry right now. And that would become a used entrance on Cherry. So, yeah, so for traffic things. Traffic in and out of the school is not high and that would be a secured entrance. It wouldn't be a general entrance for the school. Those would stay in the same places they are. But that would be the emergency access and dorm access.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michael. So I'm trying to assess what kinds of questions or information it makes sense for me to understand in all of this. So I think that one of those from, you know, a sale and planning perspective is, you know, to what extent has, has planning taken into account things like cascadeous abduction, heat mitigation, light pollution mitigation? To what extent are we going to be dealing with runoff in terms of water, stormwater runoff? How is that going to be managed? I saw the, the improvements around the traffic, pedestrian traffic interaction. I thought that was very good. It was great to see that in that presentation. It was kind of exciting and thoughtful. And also to what extent you've got a very large campus, a lot of potential with that. And in some ways, it's a closed campus. It's a residential space. I understand that. But to what extent are you able to leverage that as kind of a public benefit in terms of, of things like, you know, habitat and cooling spaces in terms of tree canopy? Those are some of the things that I would be very interested in seeing about the physical details of the space and how they contribute overall to the city's built environment.
I will mention that there are wetlands on campus as well. And so.
You're not going to fill them in, are you?
No.
Okay, good. Some people like to do that.
No. No, they're out beyond the track and so the campus already doesn't use the wetlands. So we will continue to preserve that space. This is the space that's directly behind the Capital Auto Group newer space. And so.
And wetlands could be a great learning opportunity and could be integrated into the curriculum.
If you look at original pictures from the campus, you will see that they were a self-sustainable community.
The group. This is the beginning stage. So the expectation and anticipation would be that you would return once you get into those developmental drawings and they would show the, the wetlands and the tree canopies and the shading spaces and.
Same process for.
Yep.
So I do have a question. So I don't want to get into the weeds because that's where I go. We're looking at new buildings. We're looking at new site development. I start thinking about sewer systems and PGE and impacts to the city holistically, utility-wise. Has that been contemplated in these numbers? Because these numbers are quite large.
They are. And yes, they have been. So I can't speak to the details of that, but the architecture firm that we engaged with has been very cognizant of that all along. And so those numbers do reflect all that, but I can't begin to tell you. I picked up this position and I told everybody, everything I know about construction comes from extreme makeover. So that's wildly inaccurate and I acknowledge that. So. But yeah, so I could not possibly speak to the details of that. And I know that they have been cognizant because they have talked about it all.
Yeah, I did some back at the end of calculations here too.
See if they match.
And at three hundred students, if they all live there, that's three hundred and six thousand dollars per person just for the door. And for the entirety of the project, that's one point four million dollars for one kid. And so that's got to be more than just asbestos and plumbing. Anyway, I know you don't have an answer.
I do. Well, I would.
I stumbled over that. So first I stumbled over like, whoa.
Yeah, this is a lot of.
Double whoa.
I'd invite you to come out to the campus.
I've been there. For the record, my kid went to one of the charter schools. I love that campus. It's absolutely gorgeous, but hideous buildings. Single pane windows. There's always frost on the inside when there's snow outside and they do need a makeover.
Are we here to kick the tires on the budget? What, what is our criteria as the, as the capital planning commission?
You're muted.
Sorry, I was saying that Dan, I was saying that Daniel is cutting in and out. I'm on mute. Sorry, yes, go ahead, Daniel, but you are, you're somehow you're, you're in and out on your, your voice.
So just to answer, follow up on Michael's question. So there's just two components to this review process. One is, is to the capital planning commission and there's to the capital projects advisory board, which is their next step. The capital projects advisory board is charged with evaluating as a budgetary ask in the governor's budget process, development process. Capital planning commission, as you'll learn, is really at this stage sort of assessing the, whether this plan accords with the existing policies for that area. And it's just, I think it's fair to note that this plan, as they've presented it today, is very conceptual and it's based around sort of the drivers for their business needs. There is this next step, which we have formalized in our administrative rules now, where there's a process they have to go through to go through a planning and architectural design phase where things like your significant resource overlays are going to be looked at for the wetlands. There's all of these ordinances that pertain to the city, land use that all have to be abided by. So this is really looking at it from a user standpoint and what are the, conceptually, what is the arrangement of facilities needs that is, that would suit their needs for, you know, in perpetuity to replace their existing uses there. So where we're at right now is to A, inform the capital planning commission that this is, they're in this plan development phase, but will ultimately be asking for capital to plan for these facilities. But with the idea that they would come back for their details as they evolve. So I do have the area plan with me and the policies in the area plan are pretty simple in the sense that at this level, just as a staff person, I would say that it accords with this until we have further information. But, you know, the policies around protecting state agency uses, obviously that is what intent is. The policy too is to efficiently manage to retain property. That is their intent. And encourage planned and integrated development of the property, which they are intending to do through the uses and the connectivity and to improve safety and maximize transportation efficiency and balance. I think you were keenly doing that. So as a staff person, I'd say that they are going policy five, which is continuously consider sustainability enhancements. They have been doing it on an ongoing basis with solar projects and windows, but now with new legislation that they're going to have to meet a certain performance standard, that's going to be part of the development process for those facilities to incorporate those design performance standards for their new facilities. So I think until we have something more specific where we can sort of kick the tires on our, some design elements, I think in conceptually, this is, they've kind of matched what the plan, the current plan says. So that's my take.
Did that answer your question, Michael?
Yeah.
Great.
So I guess just to follow up, yeah, these, these price tags seem a lot, but it's really within the purview of the CPAT to assess whether or not that's a reasonable thing because that's their, their role. This is about whether or not it's a good approach for, as a planning effort for the community. Okay, done. I just know it's a little hearing kind of like, get off the stage, Dan.
That's what we bring the hook.
So I guess, Mayor, how do you want to do this? This is our first foray with our new, like, little fancy rules, how we want to do the motions and approval. I think that according to our fancy new charter, we bring the language up here again.
I heard my name right there.
Very good. So do you recommend approval with or without comments and or recommendations? Do you recommend disapproval of the project proposal or proposed postponed recommendation pending further analysis?
Move that we approve without comment or recommendations, since we don't know a lot more.
But procedurally, you're required to come back with more detail. So we don't necessarily need to make that a comment. But I think if there was some initial comment was like, you know, this doesn't seem right.
I missed some of the, I missed some of the key words in his motion. Could you restate it?
Move to approve without comments and recommendations.
Yes.
Which is option A of our choice.
It's, it's a prescriptive choice.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to, I just, my only concern is that when we say approve, it's, this really seems so preliminary, like I, I'm not sure I'm ready to say I approve it. I support it. I think they're headed in the right direction. It all looks good. You know what I mean? But to say approve when it's all still very general seems like the wrong time for that. But that's just me.
Well, the approval would be to allow it to move forward to CPAT, to be considered as a budgetary ask because it accords with the area plan. So.
Okay, all right.
Do you want me to put that in the motion? Do you mind if I amend your motion to approve?
Not like.
To move forward to.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable with that.
Second, the amended motion.
We have a second.
Is there any, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Great. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
We're excited for you.
Very attractive product.
Yes, thank you so very much. Really appreciate it.
Right. So procedurally, just a quick question. Do we come back? So we're just about to start working on A and E in the trap for the track. Which was the last set of bonds that got approved. But I assume that we now need to come back and talk to you guys about that when we have solid plans? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
The planning manual, various language about the state of the project where it is phasing to where what level of.
Okay.
When you're at that point where you have stuff around or something, we'll schedule something.
Sounds good. Thanks all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
That's all we have is our new business mayor. So it's.
Is there anybody there? Nobody there for the public comment? All right. So any other business then, Daniel?
No other business.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
I nailed it.
You did. Seem awful, awful ready to go.
Great. Excited.
Amy, I told.
It's a beautiful campus.
Daniel, that I won't be here to lie in the.
It's kind of funny you and I are doing the same math over here.